Flag, Commissioner Cobb, to lead us.
God, I want to thank you for all the challenges that we face in the world today, that they remind us that we depend on you. Help us to do that. Help our decisions and what comes from us give you glory. Guide us in a way that we might show your love in us to others who maybe don't know you. Guide this county, all those here today on this court and in all the departments in the county, and we might work well for those who put their trust in us. Must especially be with our first responders and those who stand in the breach keeping us safe. Bless our actions and our words. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens, call for citizens' input and our concerns. And we've got one, Fred Medina. There you go. Come on up.
Hello, Commissioners? Thanks for letting me have this moment. Just two things, and I don't know if this is a proper form, but I just want to bring it to the Court's attention or the Commissioners' attention that I, as an attorney, do a lot of Child Protective Service cases. And one of the recurring themes that keeps coming up over and over and over again, specifically not just to the parents but to the children, sometimes I represent the children, sometimes I represent the parents. And the lack of mental health services in this community is staggering. I mean, we have, Worth is a great community. You'll go in and you look at the homes, they look beautiful. We've got these beautiful homes in College Station. We have working-class neighborhoods where I grew up in Bryan that are immaculate. Open those doors and it's a different story. And that's the hidden thing that we don't see here, as great as our community is. When Rock, we're, it's, I don't know, it's been how many years since Rock Prairie Behavioral closed down? And that was basically it. We need something to cover that gap. And I don't know what or who, we go to the state, they point fingers at each other. And I don't know what the Commissioners here can do, but there's, we're having foster care children who have mental health problems, who are being shipped to Harlingen, Texas, who are shipped to San Antonio, Waco, the far reaches of this, of this, of this state. And then the parents can't go visit them because they're so far away. And I grant it, I'm not here, what brings them into CPS court is what's happened. But then we need to fix the problem. We need to bring that family together. And so far, it's a frustrating thing, especially when, and nine times out of 10, we're dealing in some kind of drug crisis or mental health and/or both. And it's frustrating for me, and I would ask the Commissioners to let, I would be loved to do something. Let me know what I can do, and I'll do something on my front, because I know, you know, I can sit here all day with y'all, but if y'all hands are tied and can't do anything, that's fine, but if, give me some guidance, give the citizens some guidance so that we can maybe do something ourselves to do whatever it takes to get a mental health facility here in Brazos County. That's, basically, that's all I have to say on that issue. And just real briefly, Trudy wasn't here last time, and I just want to make sure that she understands that a lot of people, she's the center of attention during elections, and I think she's doing a fantastic job. Everything is working like a well-oiled machine, the way it's supposed to work. There are hiccups, as in any election, but nothing that would ever, ever, and shouldn't ever, ever question her ethics, her staff, or the ability to run a free and fair election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only one we had for citizen input.
If you're going to stay, if you're going to stay here, I've got some things I'd like to visit with you about later on.
Can I call you Mr. Torres?
Please. Let's, let's follow up.
So we'll move on to number three, presentation and discussion. Presentation by Matt Pfeffer, 4H, highlighting participating Brazos County 4H members in the Texas Major Livestock Spring Show, and recognized achievement awards and five outstanding 4H members who received scholarships at the San Antonio Livestock Show and Rodeo. Matt?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Matt Pfeffer, Brazos County Extension Agent for 4H and Youth Development. As you know, 4H is the youth development component of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. Along with leading the 4H program, a big part of my job usually involves recruiting new members, which in turn requires further defining what 4H is. My definition of 4H is pretty simple. We provide a framework to prepare youth for a successful adulthood. Although 4H does involve a lot of contests, 4H is not just about competition, it's about education. Yet, we use competition as a way to measure the success of a learning experience. Each spring, 4H members and Brazos County Extension staff travel to major livestock shows throughout Texas to include Fort Worth Stock Show, San Angelo Stock Show, Houston Livestock Show, and Rodeo Austin. The season wraps up back home with the Brazos, Brazos County Youth Livestock Show. Somewhere in between is the San Antonio Stock Show, which is unique in that it awards a $10,000 scholarship to the highest placing or champion of each category. This year, Brazos County 4H members were able to bring home five $10,000 scholarships as a result of earning champion honors in five different contests. As you're about to hear, stock shows are not just about livestock anymore, although we definitely had some success in the livestock projects. Our, our members also competed in contests related to STEM, family and community health, as well as leadership and citizenship. The success shows the diversity of the strength of the Brazos County 4H program and is a direct result of our staff, members, and volunteers that receive from this court. To tell you more, our first 4H member is Mr. Kyler Went.
So, howdy. My name is Kyler Went, and I'm a senior at College Station High School. And I've been in 4H and, for the last 10 years, and then FFA for the last four. So at the San Antonio Livestock Show, I had the privilege to show the Supreme Breeding U and receive a $10,000 scholarship. And then in 2023, I was also the high individual in the livestock judging contest at the San Antonio Youth Livestock Show. And so with the breeding sheep, I was there for three days. We got in on the first day and kind of just prepare for what would be the show day on Saturday, and then the open show would be the day after on that Sunday. And so we kind of just prepared on the first day, and then the second day would be the junior show, which would have the scholarship attached. So first, you have to win your class with that sheep, so sheep of similar age, and then, of course, in the same breed. And then, once you win the class, you have to win the breed. And then, once you win the breed, then you go back in for the supreme overall. And so that's kind of my journey at San Antonio.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, everyone. My name is McKenna Johnson, and I am a sophomore at Brazos Christian School. So this year at San Antonio, I had the opportunity and privilege to compete in the public speaking contest and to receive a $10,000 scholarship. So what it went into the public speaking contest was, I researched a topic. My topic this year was about lab-grown meat and new innovations in the agricultural industry. So I researched my topic, wrote a speech, memorized it, and then went to the contest. And I first completed, competed in the prelims in a room of about 20 kids, and then they took the top, top two from my room and from another room, and put us together in the finals. And so I won that there and received a scholarship.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Will Filippello. I'm 17 years old. I'm a senior at Rutter High School. And like Kyler said, I was fortunate enough to show at the San Antonio Livestock Show where I exhibited my breeding heifer that we raised. And I showed in my class, there was 27 in there, and I won my class. And then I went in for the division, and out of three, I was the best one in that. And then I went in for the overall drive, and I was fortunate enough to win the breed. And that's the first time my family had ever done that, so it was pretty special to us being that we raised that one. And that was my journey at San Antonio, and I was fortunate enough to win my breed.
Congratulations.
Good morning. My name's Carson Dodd, and I'm a sophomore at Bryan High School. At the San Antonio Livestock Show, I competed at the food challenge event, which is basically an event like chopped, and I have 40 minutes to prepare a dish and provide a presentation on that. And at the end of that, then we have an interview process over how you made it, the benefits of this dish, of how you did it, and ended up winning in the preliminary rounds and then went on to the final round with three other contestants, and I'm getting first place in that and was awarded a $10,000 scholarship. So, thank y'all.
Did, by any chance, you have a hand in preparing that wonderful breakfast we had this morning?
I did not.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll get a, a, you know, a showing of your talents next time.
A sampling.
Thank you.
And to kind of round off the group, Mr. Zach Smith wasn't able to be here today. He's a senior at College Station High School. He actually won a $10,000 scholarship at the San Antonio Stock Show for his photograph. So his, his photo was basically best-in-show. It's kind of hard to describe it, it's better to see it, but it's kind of this picture of blue light and a flower that he used some photography techniques and ultimately won, won the contest. He's done really well at the state 4H contest and our county contest as well. He's also a state 4H photography ambassador. So like I said, this really is just a snapshot. We had a total of, I think, 127 individual entries in the major livestock shows throughout the spring. It's not all we do, but it's a big part of what we do, so we're really proud of these young people, and again, we thank you for your support.
Well, thank you.
I think they deserve it.
I just want to congratulate all of you, outstanding young individuals. 4H is a terrific program, and it certainly produces leaders like you, and we're proud to support you.
Absolutely. Continued success.
Yes.
And apparently, this weekend, I was informed, y'all have a competition coming up. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, sir. This weekend is our district contest. So AgriLife slash 4H District 9 kind of represents all Southeast Texas. These individuals who do well at the district contest, if they're in the senior age category, will advance on to state. State roundup, which is held here on the A&amp;M campus in June, so get through this weekend, and that's our next, next milestone.
Best wishes.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Thank you. Great job. Yeah, we need to take pictures. Kyler.
Congratulations.
You know where you're going.
Good work with San Antonio.
Good job, buddy. Thank you. Good job, Mr. Dodd.
Thank you. You're welcome. So you're the only senior? You're the, both of y'all? Where are you going to school?
I go to Blenheim, Brannham, Livestock Judge.
So what they didn't say is he's going to Texas A&amp;M, and he's going to Brent, Blenheim Livestock?
Blenheim, Brannham, Livestock Judge.
Blenheim, Brenham.
Blenheim, Brenham Livestock Judging. So congratulations to these young people.
Y'all want to come in the middle here?
Yeah.
Congratulations. I know some parents and grandparents of these kids that are very proud of, of those kids. Great job.
Absolutely.
And thanks again for breakfast. Okay, we're going to move on to number four. Approval request for the resolution for Safe Streets All Grant Designating County Judge as Authorized Official, the Executive Director of the Bryan College Station Metropolitan Planning Organization as a designated Program Director and contact person, the auditor, as a financial officer of the grant.
Move approval.
Second motion made, second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is consider and take action on the following donation requested by Fane McDougall, Brazos County Chairman, Alamo Letter Society. And then there's three items listed there, but I'm going to get Fane to come up and kind of talk about this. This is a, he came in and shared it, and there's a lot going on with the letter from the Alamo from.
Lots of, lots going on. Thank you. Thanks for having us. Is that better?
Yep.
Thank you. Judge Peters, Brazos County Commissioners, on behalf of the Alamo Letter Society, I thank you for considering our request that you accept the gift of a bronze plaque, letter from the Alamo, two foot by three foot, 202 pounds. Provide a location for this plaque, and then assist us with a dedication ceremony of this plaque should we receive approval. The mission of the Alamo Letter Society, Alamo Letter Society was established last year with the sole purpose of creating and gifting a bronze plaque, similar to the one at the Alamo, to each of the 254 counties for placement near the county courthouse in each, in Texas. Please see your handout. The second page is just the, talks as a picture of the victory or death and Alamo Letter Society information. The next picture is of the Alamo, and in front of the Alamo, you can see where the Alamo letter is mounted on, it's flush with the ground, right directly in front of the Alamo. The next picture is the photograph of the letter on the plaque. The next picture is a letter from the Alamo, similar to the one that will be dedicated to Brazos County. And if you will, let me read from that. Letter from the Alamo, Commandantcy of the Alamo, Bear, February 24th, 1836. To the people of Texas and all Americans in the world. Fellow citizens and compatriots, I am besieged by a thousand or more of the Mexicans in Santa Ana. I have sustained a continual bombardment and cannonade for 24 hours and have not lost a man. The enemy has demanded a surrender at discretion, otherwise, the garrison are to be put to the sword if the fort is taken. I have answered the demand with a cannon shot, and our flag still weighs proudly from the walls. I shall never surrender or retreat. Then I call upon you in the name of liberty, patriotism, and everything dear to American character, to come to our aid with all dispatch. The enemy is receiving reinforcements daily and will no doubt increase to three or four thousand in four or five days. If this call is neglected, I am determined to sustain myself, excuse me, determined to sustain myself as long as possible and die like a soldier who never forgets what is due to his own honor and to that of his country. Victory or death. William Barrett Travis, Lieutenant Colonel, Commandant, PS. The Lord is on our side. When the enemy first appeared in sight, we had not three bushels of corn. We have since found in deserted houses 80 or 90 bushels of corn, and got into the walls 20 or 30 heads of beaves. Travis. At the bottom of that particular picture, you will see Alamo Letter Society, and that's the names of the two founders, and then in this one, it says Nuasis County. That's the names of the people that were sponsoring it in Nuasis County. The last picture is a photograph of the first, the dedication of the very first letter, and that was in Ellis County, Waxahachie. You'll see that that, instead of being mounted flush on the ground, it's in a elevated position, which is much easier to see and much easier to read. And that's, that is the particular configuration that we are hoping to be able to provide. Alamo Letter Placement. Currently, Alamo letters have been placed in Rockwall, Ellis, Nuasis, Van Zant, and Hood Counties. Additional dedication ceremonies have been scheduled in, in six counties, and strong commitments have been received from 10 additional counties. The timing of this situation, once the letter from the Alamo has been accepted by the county, and then the county chairman arranges for payment, the production of the bronze plaque commences and will remain, and will require approximately two months for completion. Planning for the dedication ceremony occurs simultaneously with the plaque production, and the dedication ceremony is scheduled once the plaque has been completed. Are there any questions?
I think it's a wonderful, it's wonderful that the Alamo Society has been created to do this. So congratulations to the society, and I'd like to move approval.
Second. Okay, a motion been made, seconded. Now, I know we haven't, we thought about potentially where it might go, I mean, outside of the courthouse there, where we've got some other monuments, it would be a potential place. I think the historical society, society has talked about actually moving some of those out to Boonville, which is where the original courthouse was for Brazos County. I don't know, but I think, I think we can have all those discussions and see where it looks like the best place that it should be located. Certainly, there's more traffic that would come through there at the courthouse than there would be out at Boonville, so I think that's something we take into consideration too, but.
I think the, the, the idea of it was that it be placed by the acting courthouse. Thank you for considering it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Fane. Thank you for bringing this to our kitchen and leading this as chair.
We haven't voted.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve the acceptance. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is approval request from Sheriff's Office to accept a grant award from NRA Foundation in the amount of $3,000.
Move approval.
Second motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval request of amended early voting hours, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Republican primary runoff election, May 28, 2024. A change in the law requires early voting to be held each day for 12 hours throughout the duration of the early voting.
Move approval.
Second motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is request from Constable Precinct 2 for approval of reserve deputy.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion.
Just want to thank Deputy Immer for his dedication to the county and his service.
Yeah, he spent a lot of years there. He worked for me at one time, so he's been around a long time.
He's really bad at retiring.
And was a good one. So he's retired and.
He's terrible at retiring, but we'll appreciate his dedication and use him.
You bet. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is request from County Records Management for the following personnel change. Effective date is April 27, 2024. The request to change has no effect on the FY 2024 County Records Management budget.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval request from Fleet Services to transfer our 2015 Ford F-150, known as asset VEH 0000115, from Sheriff's Office to Facility Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of sell, to sell radio equipment to the Brazos Valley Council of Governments, BB COG, for a total of $1 pursuant to the local government code 263.152. These items are no longer in use.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is approval of IQ 24-109, pallet pickup recommended award is Tri-Techs class.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is approval agreement 24-118 for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders with E. Rath County.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of renewal contract 2425-001R for pest control services with Allstar Pest Control Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is approval renewal contract 25-003R, water treatment with global water technology.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is approval of amending plat with Whining Creek Estates, Phase 5, 17 lots, 33.863 acres, J.C. Stusfield survey, 2A-216, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, site located Precinct 2. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is acceptance of a special warranty deed for 6.235 acres of land from Midwest Poultry Services to be used for improvements at Democrat Road, site located Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. None motion carries. Number 19 is budget amendments, FY 23/24, budget amendments 28.01 through 28.03.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8202233 through claim number 8202344 and claim number 9200894 and through claim number 900948.
Move approval.
The last set, 9200894 through claim number 9200948. Is that correct? All.
Move approval.
Do we get a move?
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is acknowledgement of FY 2023/24 budget axles by fund as of April 17, 2024, and an acknowledgement of FY 2023/24 contingency budget axles by fund as of April 17, 2024. 23 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 39 in detention, 28 males, 11 females, and 43 on electronic monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. 24, Sheriff, we're on inmate population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 801 today, 677 men, 124 women, and 39 on electronic monitoring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. 25 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Just wanted to acknowledge Aggie muster took place this last weekend. Blessings to all those who are suffering the loss of their Aggies in the last year across the world. And just to congratulate 4H in Brazos County, what a program. To Kyler, McKenna, Will, Carson, and Zach, and all the other kids, they're high achievers learning leadership, service, and just their professional acumen to the areas that they pursue. What an impressive group of young people, and what an impressive group of people helping them. I wish them luck at District 9 contest, the seniors, and on to Roundup. Let's go.
I heard on the radio this morning that Johnny Lampo passed away over the weekend.
That's correct.
Johnny Lampo was a leader here in Brazos County for many years and consulted adultisms to his family and our prayers go after them.
98 years young.
Yeah.
One of the best political campaign stories I ever heard when he addressed the Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce at their annual banquet. It, it still makes me laugh thinking about him. Judge, I wanted to take time to thank Tom Turberville for an excellent Veterans of the Valley presentation at Exploring History in the College Station Library. Tom has done such wonderful work, and he was only able to have a few, but if you get the opportunity, look up Veterans of the Valley, look at some of those videos, and it's just amazing who in this community has made such a contribution to our liberty in this country. Also, wanted to congratulate. Also, wanted to congratulate those who are going to be recognized today at the Community Foundation Tribute Lunch, John Anderson, Amber and Hunter Goodwin, and Lorraine and Chuck Herman. Congratulations to them, and thanks for all the things that they do. I will be attending Conference of Urban Counties tomorrow, so if there are things that you think are important for me to convey to that group on their policy council, please feel free to let me know. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Number 26 is adjourned. Thank you.